Did you want Ms. Norton spotlighted as well? Did you want Ms. Norton spotlighted for the pledge? And do you want spotlight for the pledge, so?
Okay. Call the meeting back to order. This time we can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
At this time, we have our, one of our students from Lowman Hill after she does the pledge and her principal will introduce her.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Ariel, that was the best pledge I've heard all year. All right, we're gonna turn it over to Ms. Norton to introduce you a little bit and share a little bit about what makes you so special. And then we will turn it back over to our, our board. Ms. Norton?
Good evening, Dr. Anderson and board members and guests. I would like to introduce our third grader Ariel Freeman. This is her first year along with me at Lowman Hill, so we're newbies at Lowman Hill together. She is in Ms. Jager's class and her lovely mother is our food service worker, Mary Outkalt. So Ariel has done a great job just fitting in and getting to know Lowman Hill and making friends. And she did a fabulous job. She's worked so hard to learn the pledge and be able to pledge it, to say it, enunciate everything just right.
Oh, and Ms. Outkalt, I know that you are so proud of your daughter. So we may have, hey there, and we may have one additional question for Ariel this evening. But first, we want to give you your certificate. Ariel, this is gonna be delivered to you tomorrow. We are so excited. It says Topeka Public Schools District, Topeka Public School District recognizes Ariel Freeman for her presentation to the school board. So you did an excellent job. We're ready for one question? Okay.
All right. Ariel, first of all, on behalf of the board, thank you for leading us in our pledge. One question, Dr. Milkerson.
I've got two questions. Dr. Anderson's giving me the stink eye, but what does your shirt say? Queen of, I can't see what the bottom of it says.
Queen of squishies.
So Ariel, what is your favorite subject in school and what do you want to do when you grow up?
I like to, I like, I like to do math and I want to be a chef when I grow up.
You want to follow your mother and her footsteps and help feed people. That's great.
Ariel, do you think you're up to one more question?
Sure.
Okay, we're gonna open up to one more question.
I don't want to take over, but what's your favorite food and what do you like to cook? If you want to be a chef someday.
I like burritos and I want to cook pate.
Oh, that's great. Ariel has done just an outstanding job. We're just so proud of you and we are so excited to have you at Lowman Hill. And Mom, I know you are also proud. It's very special to be our very first student that does the pledge. That's incredibly special. So again, congratulations and we will deliver your certificate to you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vote is unanimous?
Next item on the agenda is school highlights. Dr. Anderson.
All right, this is one of our favorite times. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Gray. It's back to school time, so we've had several people supporting us. If both individuals aren't here right now, then we will certainly hold on one of those and bring that back next time. But I do have one individual that has joined us. I'll turn it over to Dr. Gray.
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. Anderson. At this time, we're gonna see if Kansas Secure Title is on with us. We see that we do have a few people on with us. And we have Ms. Kaylee Thomas here. She's going to introduce the group from Kansas Secure Title and just share a little bit about what they did to support our Stuff the Bus campaign. Ms. Thomas?
Hello. And I do have Lori Niehaus in Bailey Ward on here with me. They are also staff members at Kansas Secure Title. And we were very passionate about giving back to the community and really wanted something to help the students with finally having a full school year this year. And we're hoping to make this an annual event.
We are so excited and we just thank you so much. What you can't see, and we might try to turn our camera so you can see this display in the middle of the boardroom. In the middle of the boardroom, for those that are watching online, Kansas Secure Title and many others, but Kansas Secure Title showed up with a whole boatload of supplies and we thank you so much. It happened to be the day that our teachers came back. And so Dr. Gray stepped away and then got a phone call that one company showed up with tons of supplies. And Dr. Gray and I both, we just were so excited. And when we saw all the things that you gave, it just speaks to what love and action looks like. So we thank Kansas Secure Title for giving so selflessly. And I'll turn it over to the board if they want to know a little bit more about who you are as our listeners are tuning in and looking at all of these supplies. And because of you and a couple of other key donors this year, no student is going without backpacks and school supplies. So thank you and all who have chosen to give this year. I'll turn it over if the board members have any questions for Kansas Secure Title.
Dr. Milkerson?
Just want to thank you for your generosity. This is a huge stack of stuff and I know our kids will benefit from it. So, so thank you so much to Kansas Secure Title and the others who donated. I was at one of our schools last week on the first day of school and there was kids that came prepared and with supplies. And there were a few that came without supplies. And so the principal escorted them and reassured them, escorted them to their room and their classroom and reassured them that before the morning was out that they would have supplies. And so generosity from people like you and others in the community make that possible. So just wanted to extend a sincere thanks and appreciation for your generosity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Mrs. Moley?
Thank you. Thank you so much for this donation. It does not only help our students in our district, but as you well hear through the media, how much teachers have to spend on school supplies for their classrooms and for their students. So this is also helping teachers being able to spend that money maybe someplace else that they see a need. So we, we are just so grateful for the donation that you've given us and it goes as well for our staff. So thanks so much.
So with both of those thank yous, we have a certificate for you to, again, thank you for your generosity. And as people are listening in and they're looking for a title company, we want you to know that Kansas Secure Title is a company that donates to Topeka Public Schools, donates to support children, and they give selflessly. And we hope that that same level of love can be recycled right back to you. So with that, we'll be delivering your certificate to you as well at your company. And since we're all online, so we will deliver that tomorrow sometime. And if we don't catch you tomorrow, we'll make sure to get it to you on Monday. Again, thank you. Thank you. I'll turn it back to Dr. Gray for our next highlight.
So much, Dr. Anderson. At this time, we're gonna see if Laird Knoller is on with us tonight. Don't see anyone representing Laird Knoller, but I may be overlooking them.
So if someone is on from Laird Knoller, just put something in the chat for us so that we know that you're there or raise your hand and we'll know that you're there. We'll just see the hand raised. Given that we don't see you right off on the screen, we're gonna continue on and we're gonna come back and put Laird Knoller on for next board meeting. They've given a substantial donation specifically dedicated to Lowman Hill, which is why we had a Lowman Hill student that did the pledge this evening. And so we again thank them for their generosity. And Lowman Hill is a special school because they have not only school supplies, but they also have uniforms and other items. And Laird Knoller Ford has given multiple times consecutively a very substantial donation, financial donation to support that school. So to make sure that you all know who those people are behind the scenes, we're going to acknowledge the Ford dealership at the next board meeting. And you'll learn a little bit more about what they've given and the impact at the next meeting. So Ms. Norton will be joining us again at the next meeting to again thank them personally. I believe that concludes our highlights unless Mr. Gallin, did we see the Ford dealership staff with a hand raised? All right, so we're gonna bring that Ford dealership staff back at the next meeting. If they don't come to the next meeting, then we'll just have to tell you how amazing they are ourselves. So with that, we're gonna turn the highlights back over to the board. That does conclude the initial highlights. We do want to mention one item as we're concluding our highlights. I believe Mr. Gallin has a video from the White House that was posted this last week. They posted another one today, actually. But Secretary Cordona, the U.S. Secretary of Education, posted a video featuring Topeka High and Topeka High students. Just to share that with the public overall, we'll go ahead and start that at this time.
And then they turned it into a big vaccination site.
This is like building back better in action. When we talk about going back to school, it's not just about being in the classrooms. It's that sense of community that we heard from students. We want the whole country to see this. This is what we mean when we say we'd love to see pop-up clinics.
Every time I do this, I know it impacts me and how did you feel?
I got a sense of, have we been affected enough? Can we just go back to how it was? I want to get my high school years back. The athletes have said, I already lost two seasons. I really want my senior year.
Look, you want to get back on the field, get vaccinated. You want to enjoy the rest of your senior year, get vaccinated. You want to protect grandma, get vaccinated. It's great to have the kids directly saying exactly why we shall get vaccinated.
We want to make sure that our students have the best support so that they can have a successful school year. It's on us now.
That's right.
So that is one of our national highlights and I believe some of our students may very well have some added highlights to share with the board in the coming weeks. And so we're excited about that visit from the second gentleman and the Secretary of Education. And board members on your desk, for those of you that attended that, you have a framed photo. Dr. Gray got those frames for you today. And so we printed off at least one of the group photos and that's framed for you as a gift and a thank you for all that you do and the continued support. We do want to also mention that the final highlight, which is not on the sheet, but we learned today that our summer program, our extended year program is on the KSTE website. So if you just want to scroll that website and just look for good news, you'll get a chance to see the highlights from the outstanding summer program by Topeka Public Schools. With that, we'll turn it back on over to the board president.
That brings us to public comments. There are none.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my God, this is.
And if you're hearing the little noise, that was just to make sure that you are wide awake. I trust that everybody is now wide awake at 6:15 and probably the YouTube site that might still be going. All right, and so that YouTube site was still going just a bit, so we're gonna get back to the board meeting. Thank you so much for being with us as we made sure the video after the first video stopped. And as we jump back on into our board meeting, we'll turn it back over to our board president.
Okay, next item on the agenda is disposition of business by consent. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the, the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign a special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
It's been moved, is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Milkerson, any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
Vote is open? Dr. Morrison?
If you just raise your hand, if you agree, then we'll go ahead and count you in. Thank you.
It's unanimous?
Dr. Anderson, are we ready to take action on those action items listed?
Sir, on the action items, we're gonna pull the strategic plan. I asked for that to be delayed. We do know that we have another member that would like to join and share some items in their section. And so if we could bring that back at the next meeting, but we would like for you to grant permission to publish the notice of the hearing and exceeding the revenue neutral rate for a fiscal year 2022 budget. We would like for you to take action on that item 20.2.
Okay. Chair would like to entertain a motion and is anyone like to offer a motion?
No, Mr. President, I move to approve the request for permission to publish the notice of hearing and exceeding revenue neutral rate for FY 2022 budget.
It's been moved, is there a second? Dr. Bowbreak, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, ready for the vote?
Voting is open? All votes are in. Vote is unanimous.
Mr. President, if we could make a motion to move the strategic plan action item to the next board meeting, that would be appreciated.
Need a motion for that? Is anyone?
Yeah, I'll move, we move the strategic plan, which is actually an item 20.1 to next, next board meeting.
Move a second, is there a second? Stuart Campbell, seconds, any discussion? Seeing none, ready for the vote?
Yes, one moment. Vote is open? All votes are in. The vote is unanimous.
And that brings us to superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. We are so excited about our speakers this evening. I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Pope, who will introduce our first set of speakers. Following our speakers, we do have two former board members who are joining us as a panel. And Ms. Pope has some questions that she and I will be facilitating and answering and asking. We also will turn it over to our board if they have questions of the former board members as part of our retreat. And this retreat really is about the roles of a board member that we have done every so many years. And so again, we are excited to have some state and national speakers. Ms. Pope? Dr. Anderson, board members, this evening, we're very happy that a couple of members of the National School Board Association were able to join us this evening. And then also Brian Jordan from the Kansas Association of School Boards. So they're going to, they have a presentation that I believe Mr. Gallin has that, and they're gonna pull up and it's Ms. McCarter, McCotter, I'm sorry, Jacobs and Ms. Carty and then Mr. Jordan. And, and they're going to talk to you about characteristics of an effective board.
Well, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and, and we're excited to have some national presence at the meeting tonight. When you all reached out to the National School Board Association, I, I kind of got looped into the conversation and, and so I'm kind of excited to be here tonight just to watch, observe, maybe ask a few questions of Ms. McCotter Jacobs. So Regina McCotter Jacobs is currently the Chief Transformation Officer with NSBA where she also serves as an attorney. Or she's an attorney that serves in that role, that'd be a better way to phrase that. She takes a lead role in executing their transformation around member engagement as well as building upon the progress in member services and equity. She previously served for three years as NSBA's Chief Equity and Member Services Officer where she took action towards equity, equality, and social justice. The Equity Program at NSBA is designed to identify discriminatory practices, prejudices, and beliefs in educational policy. She's, she expands on SBA's work while overseeing staff development and improving upon the effectiveness of organization, of the organization's mission. And this part is, is the part I think, it brings a ton of credibility to the conversation tonight. Prior to being at NSBA, she served as the Chair of the Board of Education, one of the nation's largest school districts, Prince George's County, Maryland. Very large, very diverse district. During her tenure, tenure as a board member there, she held several roles. She also served as the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Chair, then also served as the Chair of the National School Boards Council for Urban Boards of Education, also known as Q. Then she retired as a Division Chief of the Office of Professional Responsibility and Legal Affairs in Prince George's County, Maryland, the government there. So I'm excited to have her here with us this evening. I had the opportunity to meet her a few weeks ago at a, at an event I was at. And I know she's gonna bring some real practical insight to these characteristics of effective boards. So I'm gonna turn it over to Regina and let her kick us off.
Thank you so much, Brian. And first of all, let me just say I'm delighted to be here to support our state association member. So thank you so much for bringing in the national perspective and we're glad to be here to support you. And of course, we look forward to the opportunity to just share our experiences at the national level and know that it takes all of us to be effective in this work and know that as a local district, like many districts across the country right now, you're struggling with a lot of issues. And so we're just here to provide as much support as possible. So I know we have limited time. I wanted to jump, just jump right in and certainly Brian, as our member from Kansas, is gonna help facilitate. But we want to just start off with the objectives, Brian, is that, is that good?
Yeah, I, I think, well, that's a great way to kick things off. Regina's gonna be referencing a document that's out there for consumption, put out by the Center for Public Education. It's, it's built on the research around the characteristics of effective boards. So she's gonna kind of walk through those and give some examples of things she's experienced, things she's seen work as it connects with those characteristics. I may jump in and ask a few additional questions just to maybe provide a little more context and set the stage for the conversation that I know you all are gonna have with your panel speakers after work concluded this evening. So if we go to the next slide. So when we, when we put this slide in here, oh, Regina, you're muted, I believe. There we go.
Are you sharing the screen or is Valerie sharing the screen? I just want to make sure.
Topeka, somebody in Topeka is sharing the screen.
Oh, okay, because we, I'm not sure they have the right.
I thought I sent him the one that, that you sent me this afternoon.
Oh, then we should be fine. So let me let Valerie know that it's, okay, we're good. Thank you. Just want to make sure.
Okay. There we go.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted and then it keeps asking me to unmute myself. Okay, I think we're there. So I just want to just jump right in. So you saw the previous slide, it asked a really critical question about school boards and that's what's your superpower? And when we think about school board's superpower, I tend to think about one of the three main things that you focus on as a school board. And it's hiring the superintendent, setting the policies for the district, which includes things like strategic planning, et cetera, and approving the budget. And sometimes we talk about these three things sort of in a vacuum, if you will, but they have such critical support for the district and really is meaningful for outcomes for students at the board level. So we want to really focus on that tonight when we talk about these eight.
I think Regina got muted again. There we go. Okay, you're good.
So just to start, you know, we think about, the first thing I think is really important is that boards are effective and that if effective boards do make a difference, I'll put it that way. So when you think about that, there are three main things that we want you to focus on again tonight. And that is that effective boards are boards that are committed to high expectations for students. So how do we look at outcomes for students and what are the expectations at the governance level that you have for outcomes for students? And then that you're serious about accountability. So the board has a huge obligation to hold the district accountable for outcomes as well. And in doing so, that means that the board has to, has to be a key partner, if you will, in building collaboration and trust. And that collaboration and trust occurs across many avenues. So it's not just within the district, but it's the community and its outcomes that you look for, for a partner district that helped to be, to hold the system accountable. But at the same time, you know, how often do you hear in the community that you want certain outcomes? Well, if we, if we look at it as everyone is responsible for the success of outcomes for students in the, in the district, then that also puts the onus on others within the community to be successful and engaged. Next slide. And so we know that what's really critical in having that conversation is that boards who are actively engaged in strategic planning at the district level and goal setting is really gonna be focused on outcomes for the district. And so, you know, when I think about the, my own war stories and wounds, as I say, the battle scars from board service that I still carry, I think about, you know, how often it was so easy to sort of get steered away on what it, what is the key issue of the day. But boards who are really focused on the strategic plan, focused on goal setting, are gonna be mostly effective and highly efficient, if you will, in outcomes for the district as well. Brian, I don't know if you want to take this one, just kind of leaning in? Sure.
Yeah, so when we talk about that, the accountability piece, and when we talk about those high expectations, those really need to be established at the upper, upper levels of leadership. And, and many times when we talk with board, we talk about being in the watchtower, seeing the, the 10,000 and above foot view, which means you're, you're surveying the community, you're looking at the needs of the community, you're looking at the needs across your entire system. And I, I think too often we, we get fixated on one need or one area or one area of our community that has some needs and we lose sight of those other, other pieces. So as we establish those expectations and, and we try to make sure that, that we're balancing the needs of the entire system, we have to do that at the highest level. And the, the purpose behind staying at that level is as soon as you go down into, as this slide shows, below that 10,000-foot view, you start to lose perspective. And it sends messages throughout your system and your community that other, other needs, other areas of concern aren't as important when that perspective gets lost. And it's very difficult because we all come to the board table wanting to help, wanting to ensure that, that all students can be successful. Uh, and we have some emotional connection to certain students or programs or things that are happening in our district and that sometimes pulls us down too close. And we lose that perspective. So as we establish that accountability, as we establish those expectations, we really have to try to keep ourselves at that 50,000 foot. Or above that 10,000 foot view when we're doing that. Let's go to the next slide, please.
Okay. So that brings us to this whole question about, so what is the relationship between the board's role at that sort of? 50,000 foot level and outcomes for students? How often do you hear? Um, you know, how does board, how does the board in its governance role really impact outcomes for students? Well, I'm just here to tell you today that it's critical. It's very important. Um, that boards do realize that they have direct impact and your governance and policy role has direct impact on outcomes for students. And we often say at NSBA and as we work with our state associations that we really focus on governance teams. So how often as a board have you heard maybe in your initial training or orientation that? There's a board's role and here's a superintendent's role. Well, those things are true, but I think when a board is, um. When boards are sort of, sort of like, well, then what is it role or how do I fit in? That's when we start to see that, um, the goals that we've set or the strategic plan that the district has set can get out of sorts, if you will. So the board has to set high goals for student outcomes and student achievement. And that is the role of the board to really set the stage for what that means in the district. And ask those critical questions. How are these goals measurable? Which is where the board is holding the system accountable. So if you think of. Sweet things that we talked about, the board is, is responsible for ensuring that the ensure as a board that the community and those who are partnering with the district. Know what those goals are. And oftentimes if the community doesn't know the goals. Your business partner doesn't know the goals, the community as a whole. Will then also help to steer you away from that 50,000 foot level because. Again, we all sort of focus on what's happening on my corner, my street, my school. And the board's role is to, to look at the district holistically. So this is really critical when you talk about those outcomes for students. Next slide. So we're going to delve right into these traits, right? So the first one that we really focus on here is that effective school boards commit to a vision of high expectations. And we talked about that a little bit already as we think about, um, what does it mean for, um, high expectations for student achievement and quality instruction? Well, yeah, the board is in, in the classroom, but what it, what is the vision that the board has set around expectations? And what you'll find is that we look at these really five core factors in general. We talk about how do these traits play out? And part of that goes to, um, how does the board ensure that at the district level? That there are some goals that are non-negotiable, that there's, the allocation of resources are going to be focused on. On the outcomes that you expect at the district level. And then how do you hold the superintendent? And the superintendent's team accountable for ensuring that you have the data necessary to do that. And so we're going to talk a little bit more as we go through each trait.
I might, I might throw in there that when we talk about non-negotiable, sometimes that jumps off the screen at folks and they, they want to, uh. They, they want to know a little bit more about what that specifically means. But when we talk about non-negotiable, what we're really talking about is when you're pitted. With that tough choice as a board member of where to help allocate resources. If you've established this is the priorities and the goals, whatever bumps up against that becomes option B. Uh, and so, uh, it's just having that, we like to say laser focus on, on those things that are critical for ensuring that your students' needs are being met.
Absolutely. And sometimes Brian, you know, that means that, uh. Do an audit of their own meetings, right? To make sure that they're focusing on student achievement and the outcomes that they're seeking, um, through the strategic plan. Which brings us to the second trait. When you think about effective boards, you really have to look at what are the shared beliefs and values that you have around the district and what is it? Um, what do you see as the possibilities for students? So, you know, sometimes we, we, we hear that as, you know, students reaching their highest, uh, their highest level of achievement. And so the, the question really becomes how do boards ensure that as you look at the data within your district and you look at systems that currently exist? That you're creating a culture and an environment where students can be, um, successful. And that really means that you have to share beliefs about children's ability to learn in the first place and. Um, that certain students aren't isolated from that belief and that we have, um, at the highest level in the district, those shared values. And then how does the board communicate those values across the community? Next slide. So as we think about effective boards being accountability driven, this is where, again, this is where your superpower really shows up. So if you think about. If the board is spending a lot of time on operational issues, that means that you're not spending time on your governance level and the, the higher level. That you need to be focused on because when you think about student achievement and outcomes of what's best for children. It means that the board has to really be thinking about what is your advocacy role, for example. And all too often we forget, or. At least, um, the advocacy role sometimes gets lost in, in the day to day, if you will. And so as a board, um, controlling your agenda in a way that is devoted to policies that are. That are helping to, um, helping the superintendent's team as they navigate the outcomes for student achievement. If you think of it this way too. That's why you have the superintendent and their administrative team. And, and that's why it's important to hold the system accountable for those things. And so how do you schedule those opportunities? Um, one of the things that I think about when I think about accountability as a quick example. When the communicate, when the lines of communication between the governance, uh, team and the, and the superintendent team are really open and clear. And that there's opportunity for those conversations to happen. That is when, you know, that's the best or optimal time, if you will, for the best outcomes for students. And that can be done in a number of ways. And we can talk a, a little bit more about that as we go through and, and get questions from you. Um, but we, we found that school boards across the country with their, with their superintendent find creative ways to ensure that the lines of communication. Is open for the accountability driven, um, outcomes that you're looking for. Next slide. And so how often have you heard about, you know, look at your data, what is your data telling you? Um, and I think it was probably about a decade ago now, or maybe more, when we really started talking about data savvy boards. And essentially what it's telling you is follow your data. Um, so the numbers are one thing. We talk about following your data, but it's really also how does, what is the story that data is telling you? And so boards that really focus on, um, disaggregating data. Um, how, what does it look like in one part of the community vis a vis another card, a part of the community? And you embrace it in a way that you're monitoring it, you know, uh, when I was on the board, it was, it was a long time ago. I finished my term in 2016. Well, maybe not that long ago, but we created a data dashboard policy, right? And it was at a time when. People weren't thinking about a data dashboard policy and it really helped keep the board focused, one on the data, but on the accountability for the system. So just something to think about. And then I would just add real quickly that, um. When you're talking about the data, it's not just disaggregating and looking at it, but looking at it from the lens of, of each student and what they bring to the table as assets. As opposed to problems to solve. So data should not be focused on prob, what problems do we have, but is what are the assets that come to our district and how do we navigate and leverage those?
I would add just something to that. One of the challenges that I see a lot of boards struggle with is as they develop that strategic plan. Um, they, they don't take the next step and really define what are, what's it going to look like six months, nine months, two years from now? Uh, with our data, uh, to show that we're actually headed in the right direction with this. And so. Uh, those two pieces have to go hand in hand. So as you establish those, those high levels of accountability and non-negotiable goals. The conversation also should be around, okay, what's the data tell us and what's it look like if we're making the necessary steps with that? And so I, I work with a lot of boards that have the strategic goals, but haven't pinned down exactly what they expect to see six, nine, 12 months. Uh, down the road with that information.
That's really good, Brian. That's just, and that's another reason why I think a data dashboard usually, um, helps boards. It, and it also keeps you focused because it helps the district say, this is where we are, where we're trying to get to. Um, characteristic number five is one of my favorites, um, effective boards align and sustain resources. And the reason why it's one of my favorites, even though this one focuses kind of on professional development to meet district goals. Um, when I see alignment and sustained resources, I think of intentional allocation of resources. So that means that boards really have to be intentional about, um, your approval of the budget process. When the superintendent brings your budget and you've looked at the data and now you're savvy with the data and you know what you're looking for. Um, it's aligned with the strategic goals and plans. You're actually saying now, how does the, my approval of this budget align with what the outcomes that we want to see happen? Um, and that gets to what you just finished saying too, Brian, about. What is this going to look like six months from now? Because if you're not allocating the resources to support what your outcomes are. Then boards are going to find themselves again, just, you know, not knowing where you are at, at, at a certain point. And also struggling with accountability, which is a key function of the board. Want to get this one, Brian?
You bet. I, I, I smiled because you, you nailed this one early on when you were talking about. Uh, what great boards do and, and you talk specifically about that collaboration building. And I think oftentimes. Uh, we, we think, well, it's collaboration within our board and building trust within our board, which is critical. But you'll notice this one, there's two key terms in here, staff and community. Uh, so it's, it's not just the seven people along with Dr. Anderson that, that have to collaborate. Well, that, that's a, that's a given. But you also have to collaborate and pull in the partnership and collaborate with your community. And, and we've talked about this as we've gone through this, as you establish those goals and those priorities for. Uh, your system and your community and your kids, you need the support of the community to help move those things along. And we saw that this evening, uh, with the recognition that you did with Kansas title with Laird Knoller. Those are perfect examples of where you're working with the community to help support and move those priorities forward. Uh, and, and too often I think boards only go to the community and ask for help when, when they really need it. So we'll think of bond issues or, or, or some of those bigger things that we, we easily come to mind, but. It's the day to day needs that, that people, they don't have an awareness of that. And so you have to really have that collaboration and that trust established. So that they can continue to support your system, uh, continuously, not just in those high times of need.
Absolutely. And the only thing I would add to that is we have to create circumstances and conditions where others are living with the decisions that are made. It's so easy to just point the finger and say, hey, the board makes these decisions. But when, when the community is informed, um, when, when the community understands the data and they understand why you're making certain decisions that often unfortunately. May not be popular, but they've been brought into the conversation. It also, um. Goes to this issue of accountability because when we think about accountability, it's not just the board who should be held accountable or the district who should be held accountable. It's the other elected officials in the community. It's the business owners in the community. All, if you keep in mind that everyone is responsible for outcomes for students, that's what brings community along, not just that the board is, 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 you know. Has to make all the decisions and then live with those. So collaboration, collaborative relationships are really good. And next slide. So I think this one, um, is always a tricky one, right? With boards, um, when I was elected to the board, we, all nine of us were brand new. Like every single person. So there wasn't a situation of, um, you know, we, we had some board members that were coming back from being elected. Our board literally was all elected at the same time because we, we had returned to an all elected board and at the time. And so it is so critical. And in that time for us, it was tough initially for us to, you know, get together as a united team, but we had to do the hard work. And when you think about building team and that forming and storming and norming, you actually have to get to performing as well. Even when you get to norms, you've got to get past that to get to performing. And that only happens when it's a united team and that united team is a governance team. It's not board or superintendent. It's a governance team. And each one understands their respective roles and you build the collaboration and trust. And I think oftentimes what happens is. You know, you're not necessarily asking people to be your best friend, but you have, you have a goal. And that's why it's so unique about school boards is that you have. It's like you have your own city, your own community. Um, school boards are often the largest employer, as you know, in your community in many places across the country. That's the way it is. So students are and families are relying on you to be a united team. And as, as hard as it can be at times, it's really critical to get the outcomes that you're looking for. And sometimes the best way to do that, you know, is to find what are those things? Um, sometimes we just kind of shy away. Well, you know, what are the things that are really your hot button issues in the community? It's good to get to know what each person really, um, feels strongly about. And that's how you build team and that's how you build. Collaboration among yourselves. Um, and then the public starts to see that and that's what makes a difference.
I might ask just a question there, Regina. When you were in that role with, uh. Your, your board service, what were some of the, the, the things you did like on a process? Level to, to build that and, and try to build that team, especially with nine new faces there in a, uh, in those seats.
Yeah, that's a good question. So we actually started off similar to what you're doing tonight with the retreat, but we really had. An initial retreat and to be honest with you, we just kind of hashed it out. We, you know, the elections process was tough for many of us. Um, it's a huge county. So we had, um, you know, the, the politics were tough. But we just had a conversation about what are, what are the things that, that matter to me? What, and, and where do we come from? It's really having an understanding of how people show up. So we had those really tough conversations. The other thing we did, we went through a two-year sort of intensive. And I call it intensive sort of training together with the board and superintendent team. And we got to know each other. Again, it didn't mean that we wanted, we had to be best friends, but we got to know. What are the things that we need to do as a team to, um, to, to move things forward? And then what we did, Brian, which I think was really probably most important. Um, we, of course, being data savvy is important, but we also took the time to, to look at what is it going to take for our district? It's one thing to compare yourself to other places, but what is it going to take for our district and who are the key players that we need to bring in? And we took some of the most critical tough decisions, believe it or not, upfront. We did it in the beginning. Um, and made some really tough choices about policies that were still on the books that needed to be changed. Um, we, we built some community among the community and we created just, uh, this one I think was good too. We had what we called, um, Committee of a Hundred. And that allowed the board to bring in members of the community, um, to meet with the superintendent. And this is, I hope the superintendent is okay. But this was, this worked in our community. It was an ability to bring members of the superintendent together so that we were. When we were bringing forth maybe controversial issues or we were bringing forth things that needed, you know, really strong support in the community. We had, we built a way to build it first with a core group in the community. We educated the community and we created foot soldiers, if you will. Um, and then they helped us. Um, we built situations where, when there were board members that needed to make tough decisions because of their community, we provided cover. And so I'm just giving you, those are some of the examples that we did, but one thing that really helped us was we stayed together. We did a lot of training together. And conversations together and the superintendent created circumstances where. Uh, and you have to look at your own open meetings laws, but the superintendent built community among board members. Where he would actually, um, spend time with board members, whether it was lunchtime or whatever. We got weekly updates, things like that, that was to help us keep and keep us informed so that we were in a better position to make informed decisions. Just some examples. And then I think the last trait that we want to share with you, um, as we think about, and this is going to go sort of lead us into a policy, quick policy discussion, but it's taking part in. Team development and training. Um, and it's building again, it's about building the shared commitment, building the, uh, values and commitments that you want. Across the district. And then how do you bring your individual assets, um, to the table to ensure that that happens? And oftentimes effective boards, that means that you have to train together. You have to, um. You know, show where your commitment is in, in those really key pieces. And I'll, how, how often do we say it? We require professional development for our educators and professional development at different levels. Um, board members need it too. And oftentimes it's most effective when it's with the governance team.
I would just tag onto that, that one of the things that I, I see happen pretty regularly with boards. Around that specific development and training is, uh, when we have turnover, we have elections, we have. Uh, we don't hit pause on the, on the fast track we're on and, and make sure that everybody's. In an equal place with their understanding of their roles, their responsibilities, the priorities. And too often people start to feel left behind or they, they start to feel like, oh, I'm an outlier. I can't ask questions. And so it's critical that boards hit, hit the, hit the brakes a little bit, especially when there's some change in the board team. Uh, and make sure everybody's in a, in a common place with the understanding of why we're focused on these goals, these priorities. And the processes that we're using, why are these things important? So.
Like that one, I wanted to, let me just add really quick to that because. How often do you hear a board say, oh, I don't want to ask questions because I'll be seen as the one who's not cooperating or whatever. It's the board's job to ask questions. Um, that's what boards are supposed to do. That's the accountability piece. It's trust but verify, right? It's not that you don't trust the district. But also it's, you still have to have things in place that speak to, how do you not get off track with where the district is going so that you can get to. Um, to those outcomes that you're looking for. Um, but that leads us to this really critical conversation. Um, brief, albeit about the impact of board and district policies. And so if we leave you with nothing else tonight, I believe that if you walk away with the idea that board policies and policies in the just district. They're having some impact on. that board policies and policies in the district, they're having some impact on student staff and the board in general. They're either exacerbating inequities, they're eradicating them, they're perpetuating them, or they're mitigating them. If you think about that and you think about policies that are currently on your books and policies that you're thinking about implementing, these are the really critical questions that you need to ask to make sure that when you're, when you're either reviewing policies or creating new policies, that this is how you look at them. How are these policies going to impact outcomes for our students, of course? And definitely staff and internal board relationships.
And I'll tag on to that. That directly tags back to some of those traits that we talked about with collaboration, trust. How do you ensure that you're hearing from or you have some voice given to those people that these policies are impacting? I think we all look at the policy through our own lens, our own experiences, what we know, what we hear, what we see. What's your process? What's your mechanism that you're going to establish? That builds that collaborative environment and culture where you're building those relationships outside of your board team to make sure that your, your policy is on point with what you're needing to do for your students? Okay. I think that's.
Brings us back to the beginning. Yeah.
Yeah, I think the last slide just reemphasizes those key roles that the board had. I think we bumped up against our time limit, Ms. Cope, so I apologize. You know me, I like to talk a little bit, so. If the board has questions.
And we're going to turn it over to the board. We thank you both for coming and sharing and especially the national perspective, the practical perspective. We thank you so much. We're going to turn it over to the board for Q and A. And if there aren't immediate questions, we have some questions for them, really for our panel. And so as our panel begins to answer, which are former board members who served almost two decades on the board, I know that sounds like a long time. And one of those board members is on the screen with us and then the former board members. And then the other member is with us as well. So we're going to introduce that panel. And with that panel, anyone can really ask, answer any of these questions. But before we jump into that panel conversation and introduce them to the public, do any of our board members have some immediate questions they would like to ask from our experts? And if not, we'll jump on into the panel questions.
Thank you for that presentation to both of you and Ms. McCarter Jacobs. I have a question. I was intrigued by your data dashboard comment at Prince George's County. And can you just expand on what that looked like and how you assembled it and what kind of data did you review?
Absolutely. So we worked with the superintendent's team. The data dashboard policy was really simple. It said that the board required from an accountability perspective that, and we built it around seven functions. So for example, it depends on your own district, but we built it around the functions of the district so that we would get reports every quarter or so on different functions within the district. It kept the board in an accountability level, at an accountability level. And it's, and literally the district would create a dashboard. It would say, here are our goals around, I'm just using transportation and how that works in our district. Here are the goals. Here's what we need to accomplish those goals. And here's where we are at this moment in time. And so if you're not at that point, the staff would say, this is where we are. This is where we're trying to get to. And if we're not there, this is why. And it also helped the board to tie back to the resources that you approved in the budget. Well, we approved these resources in the budget and we approved it based on the data that we received from you, Madam Superintendent. So help us understand, how do we now hold the system accountable? What adjustments do we need to make? And the data dashboard policy, as I said, it was very simple. I'll make sure Brian gets a copy of it so that if you wanted to share or take a look at it, that you can have it. But essentially, it was literally created as a dashboard. The targets themselves was created with the superintendent team, obviously, because they know more about the intricate details of what the district would need. But the board would look at those and approve sort of the high-level pieces around it.
Thank you. That'd be interesting to look at. So if, Brian, you could forward us a copy, that'd be wonderful.
Happy to.
Dr. Morrison.
I have a question. And I don't know if any of you have run into this, but you know, every day we see NASB up against local boards, up against state government making the local, or taking over what the local boards are supposed to be doing. And you know, the, the, the activity would be masking, of course. And the governor saying you can't mask, but as local boards in a, in a county situation with heavy levels of COVID, that's just not right. And so how do we go through this? How do we figure out what we need to do? I mean, as a local board, we know what's right, but we're told other things.
So I don't know if you want me to go first, Brian? I'm happy to, but it looks like.
You can go, you can go first from the national perspective. I can talk a little bit about what I've seen some, some larger districts try to do with this, with this topic. Go for it.
Sure. Here's what I'm going to start with. Our, if you know the national agenda, if you will, from an advocacy perspective, we are strong advocates of local judgment, local control. And that is the way that, because we believe you know your own communities and you know what's happening in your own communities. What I would say to you is that in some ways, we're glad that people woke up and said, oh my God, the board has such enormous power and ability to make some really critical decisions. And I would just tell you that it's difficult. It's hard. I'm not going to say this is what you should do as a local district, because I do believe it is a local decision that you have to make. What I will say to you is that we will continue at the national level to support our state associations, knowing that we're representative of this country. And so our mantra, if you will, is that local, local boards know best what to do in their own communities and we stand by that.
I would just add to some things that I've seen. It's not been easy for any district to work through this, but some things that I've seen have helped to lessen some of the pressure, pressure is probably not the right word, some of the fervor to the local board is, how do you engage a larger base than the eight people sitting in the room? And some districts that I've seen, they've expanded that to a team of experts. And that becomes their guiding group. And they've used that team to continually inform, bounce ideas, make recommendations to the board. And in those boards, one of the things that they've been steadfast in is we're going to do what's best for kids and protect our students. And I think too, too often we get, we get so much pressure from the loudest voices. And I had a communications person in one of the larger districts in the state visit with me and said, you know, when I was talking with our team about that, you know, you hear all those voices a lot of times through social media, but when you're really starting to stillen that down and you're hearing from 200 people in a 20,000 student district, that's a pretty small number. And so I think if you can keep it focused on, we're going to do what's best for our students' safety and health and our staff's safety and health, because we need them to ensure that our kids are being successful. And you broaden that base, that collaboration piece that we were talking about in the characteristics. I think it helps, but it doesn't make it any easier. It's just a really trying time with this right now. But if you can keep focused on that, that guiding principle of what's best for our kids' safety and health, it's hard to argue when you do that.
Dr. Bonebrake.
I appreciate your presentation and how we can become a more effective board, but we're trying to increase the expectations of the children. And I have two ideas of what we can do to increase student learning and productivity. And that is promoting professional development and developing year-round schools. We're trying to make baby steps, but what policies nationally can we do with our learning, with our limited budget to increase learning and success? What, what has been successful?
So there, there are, from a national perspective, I can share with you what we share with our state associations. And I'll make it quick, but there are sort of five, four factors that we look at. The intentional allocation of resources, which we could delve into that at a, all by itself, but it's the intentional allocation of resources, is access and opportunity to high-level curriculum. And we could talk about what that means, but essentially it's how do you determine what students get access to certain things? And if, and in your district, that might mean that it's changing the school calendar. I don't know. I'm just using that as an example. But it's also access to, and we have data to support why these are the factors that we look at. And then we look at what is the access to high-level and effective educators? So data across the country, not just, you know, in Kansas or whatever, suggests that students who have the greatest need or who are least likely to be successful in the academic environment are also placed with teachers who are not as equipped to help support them and teach them. And so when we think about that, that's one of the, that's another area. The other one is safe and supportive schools. A lot falls into safe and supportive schools, but one that falls in that, that we know exists across, across the country as well, is how students get access to their education. So we look at things like discipline. What is your code of student conduct currently saying? So if kids aren't in the classroom, victory can't happen. And so how do you ensure that children want or in the classroom? And what does that mean if it means alternative education options? So if I were to use the example that you just gave, which was year-round schools, how do you, how does the board create an environment where some students might need that? Because we, we've taken the approach that one size is not fit all when we come to students. So I know that's a lot in a, in a quick sort of piece, but I can share with Brian sort of how we break down that information. And we use data across the country that is quite frankly, not different across the states. It show, it's going to, it usually shows the same sort of thing. And then we, we challenge boards to do a root cause analysis around your data. What is your, what is the story that it's telling you? And how are students showing up in your district so that you can make decisions about whether the year-round school is going to even have a positive impact? So doing it for the sake of doing it is not going to get you where you need to. But how do you tie that to your data and the intentional allocation of your resources?
Yeah. One of the things that I'm interested in is building sort of a collective purpose. This idea of this two or three things that we want to do and how sometimes they conflict with Open Meeting Act and these laws that prohibit, you know, ways that we can engage each other. I wonder if you could talk about that?
Yes. So I can, I'm happy to talk about it. Brian is probably going to be better because he knows your open meetings laws in, in the state, but this is what I would say to you. What, in my own experience, I'll put it that way, what we would do is we would have situations where the superintendent intentionally met with the board in, or provided opportunities to share with the board what's happening in the district in small groups. So not decision-making, but sharing out and engaging the community in a different way so that the board can have those really critical conversations or get, get information without making decisions. There, I would say there are a number of ways of doing that, but I think the other maybe key piece too is that when you have your meetings, I don't know how you have them set up generally, but we also did different things. We had our student achievement meetings. We had our workshop meeting, our actual work, work meetings, and we had the pay the bills meetings. So it gave it more time to focus on those really critical things so that you can make those tough decisions and those really different decisions that you may want it to make as a board. And you had space to do it instead of trying to cram it all into a traditional board meeting.
Yeah. The only thing I would add to that, in Kansas, the districts that I see doing this, they're spending more time together. They're figuring out retreats, study sessions. A lot of districts have taken on the, there's about four, five, four months out of the year that have a fifth Monday, so they schedule that as strictly a study session. And they spend time in that. The other factor here, and Regina hit on this, and we talked about the effective boards, you have a finite amount of time around the board table. Where are you spending it? And so you're doing some self-assessing on what are we spending our time and energy on while we're at the table? Does it really connect back with, to the strategic priorities that we have? I think a lot of boards spend a lot of time at the board table and never really get to the heavy conversations that they need to have. And so you really kind of need to sometimes step back and look at your own processes within your board culture to determine, are we spending our time on the things that matter the most?
We did an audit of our agenda.
Lori. Ms. Cope.
To open this up for the panel, first of all, we want to thank you all again. And just rich conversation and information on a Thursday evening. We thank you so much. One of the things we want to share with the board, as we look at our structure for the majority of our board, our new board members, and as we pivot now to our panel, we want you really to kind of reflect on the structure. So one of the items on the agenda that we've done at least the last five, I guess now going into my sixth year, is we put a strategic plan topic. So if you look at the board agenda, like the last board meeting and the board meeting before that, this one says board retreat. But it normally says strategic plan, achievement, or graduation, or equity. But the purpose of that is to take you back to the strategic plan. So the purpose is to take you back to the pillars in the strategic plan that were set so that we really stay focused on whatever we talk about should go back to that strategic plan. That's one piece that we want to just point out. The other piece is the fact that we have the various committees that you all select to be on and change. Finance as well as policy, all of those committees where you spend time together. It's so critical that those are in place and that you are involved and engaged in those spaces. I would suggest that someone from our board also participate on the strategic planning committee. I think Mr. Campbell, you may actually be on that. But perhaps the second member, previously it was Dr. McCarthy and Ms. Janelle Johnson. And now Mr. Woods, former board member, is participating on the subcommittee about dual language. But those are pieces that allows for continued conversation, but that structure are one of those pieces. The last item that I would just offer to you, the weekly conversations are monthly. So for me, it's one week with someone, a one-to-one meeting. As was shared here, those are critical to just have those dialogue sessions. And so if we're missing those meetings or someone's not available or you're not scheduling time, I would just encourage you to change the time. My time is yours. I serve at your pleasure. So whatever time you want to meet. But just to talk about what's on your mind or here's what's going on in the district. Those are critical conversations that just allows us to build relationship. So just some of those key pieces are put in place just strategically because it's, it's what builds effective boards. This is almost my 30th year, most of which as superintendent. And those are constants, no matter what district I've been in, out of the three states. Everything that was just said here on the national perspective are pretty consistent with where we line up structurally about what we need to do. So that just gives you context about why those things are in place. Having said that, in the past, this board had a listening tour prior to me coming in. And when I started, I had a listening tour. But these opportunities, these structured opportunities to invite people to listen, what you notice here, unlike some districts who are having the mass debate, you may receive five or 10 emails. That's really small. As Mr., as Brian Jordan, when he said 200, I don't know that anyone's ever received 100, much less 200. And so even, you know, so just thinking about this in context, when people are invited to come and speak and they come and they speak, you really don't have a large number of people sharing that they don't understand. And, and so just offering some of those contextual pieces as understanding. With that, we have questions offered for our former board members. So we're drilling this down to now practical piece. So now you have the structural piece from a state and national perspective. So then what does this look like on a day-to-day basis? And what if you're faced with particular situations? So we have some hypothetical items as well as just general items that Ms. Cope will ask. And she's going to turn it over to our former board members who are well-seasoned in this, but it also can be open to anyone. We understand Mr. Jordan and Ms. McCarter Jacobs, if you have other things to tend to. But you're also welcome to stay and pitch in if you choose to. And on a final note, thank you so much for your time. We know time is an investment and we so appreciate it. I'll turn it over to Ms. Cope for that panel discussion. And let's start with having our panelists introduce themselves. Yes, ma'am.
All brand new since my day. So I'm Peg McCarthy. I was a school board member for close to 14 years. I was originally appointed and then elected to office three times. And I was also a parent of three sons who came through the schools. And I am a practicing clinical psychologist in town.
Thank you, Dr. McCarthy. And Mr. Woods?
My name is Patrick Woods. Hello, everybody. Good evening. I am, I served on the board for 13 years, almost. My first term. Um, my first term was in 2007 and pretty interesting. You know, when I got elected, uh, was, those were pretty heady times. We had just passed a billion dollar uh, school finance package. And uh, districts like Topeka were getting money and everybody was excited about doing great things for our kids. And uh, less than a couple of years after that, we had a global recession. So um, my, my introduction was not quite as dramatically altered as yours was. Um, I had the good sense to know to get off, I guess. Um, I did. But um, I have uh, two children in the district. I have a ninth grader and a sixth grader. Um, and uh, in Topeka, I'm a, I am a regulatory economist, if anybody knows what that is. Um, for a, uh, an international uh, uh transmission firm. We built transmission for uh, energy.
Thank you for being with us, Mr. Woods. All right, so we're gonna turn to the questions and I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Cope. And we have a few of those, but then board members, you may have questions as well. She's just gonna kick it off with one or two questions and then we'll stop. And if there are none from you, then we'll ask another one.
Okay, I'm gonna start easy, maybe. Uh, certainly broad. How about that? I'm starting with a very broad question. Uh, kind of to piggyback on what we've just been talking about, what do you believe is the role of a board member?
Bra.
I'll defer to Dr. McCarthy. You're welcome.
Role of a board member uh really is to pave the way for every child in the district to be as successful as possible. Bottom line is, it's always about what's best for the kids. And you can see that in the various traits that they brought forward about what it is that makes an effective school board. Um, that I would say to you, as long as you use that as your guide, you, you, you will go, go in the right direction. So even looking at, at any individual element, for example, examining policies. Um, that was a very rewarding activity for me, serving on the policy committee for as many years as I did and working closely with other board members and with Mrs. Cope. And um, having really deep discussions. Those were opportunities for that kind of deep discussion about why we do what we do and how does it affect everyone? And how do three different viewpoints weigh in on that? Um, and that's how good policy is made. So obviously hiring the superintendent and creating policy are the two major pieces that, that you will accomplish that are unique to you. But um, but the guiding principle is really about what's best for kids. And to know that, you have to know our kids and our population and our schools. And that, that takes a lot of work and dedication.
Yeah, you know, I, I think Dr. McCarthy is exactly right. The only thing I would add to that, um, so she laid pretty much where you should be focused as a board member, hopefully why everybody seeks this office. The reason anybody would ever put their, put themselves through. And you know, launching a campaign for a, a job that, you know, people do accurately characterize as thankless. Um, it's certainly un, you know, inglorious at times, but uh, but probably our most important elected job. Uh, the thing that I would add to that would be uh, as a board member, the hardest thing to, to remember, and our two previous speakers hit on this, is you are not in charge uh of the details. Um, it's important to not let yourself get, you know, weighted down in the details. Um, you put together the, the what, you know, uh, what the district's gonna do. And you hire an administrator uh, who is in charge of running a staff to decide the how, how it's going to get done. Uh, and while you're going to certainly have significant influence on how things happen, um, because that has definitely implications for, for the what being accomplished. Um, it, it's important, you know, not to cross that line between governance and administration and start uh, you know, trying to make some of the day to day calls that the one employee that you evaluate, you know, is supposed to make. That probably was a question later on down the road, Ms. Cope, so sorry if I jumped.
No problem. All right, now we're gonna get specific. So you got the one broad question, now we're gonna get specific. Uh, you both uh mentioned that you had, while you were on the board and, and Mr. Woods still has uh, students in the district. So uh, how did you address concerns or issues with teachers and or administration regarding your child or children, knowing school staff doesn't view you simply as a parent, but also as a board member?
You get to go first on that.
Okay, I was gonna defer to my uh, clinical therapist who I knew would give the right answer. Um, but uh, so one thing you have to be cognizant of is that you are more than just a parent. Um, clearly you are in this game. You're there with your child because you're a parent. But um, when you do talk to staff, uh, when you talk to, you know, uh, frontline teachers who are really the professionals who are doing the work, um, that's the thing you gotta remember as a board member. It's them who actually help us reach children. Nothing gets done without them. Uh, they're going to view uh, you as a board member first and they're going to take many of the things that you say as authoritative. So um, I, I personally would always try to be as polite as I could, be as uh clear when I was addressing a concern upfront to let them know that now I'm, I'm speaking to you, you know, as a, uh, as a parent, not as a board member, which doesn't matter, then you're still a board member to them. Uh, what I want you to understand is uh, if you disagree, I really want to hear, you know, any, I want to hear your, your opinion as the professional. Um, you know, I work in business outside of education and I'm a parent uh, and I'm a board member, but I'm not a, an educational expert, you are. So let's talk a little bit about this situation. I've got a concern with how this was handled. I need your professional expertise. I want to be your partner in making this thing work, um, you know, for my, my student. Uh, whenever I approached it that way, I found that I was successful. If ever I approached it where I would just start enumerating my concerns to the teacher, then I'd usually end up with either a scared teacher who would do immediately everything, the opposite of everything that you list as concern. Um, and you may get too far the other way, or they just be scared to death to talk to you. So um, being cognizant of the fact that you're, you're scary as a board member uh, to people is, is important.
That's, that's excellent advice. And I wouldn't, wouldn't add a lot to that, except just to say that um, first of all, if you've come onto the board already having kids in the district, you already have a bit of a template for being an active, involved parent who's established good communication with your kids, teachers and, and administrators. Hopefully, you know, I'm sure that's for each of you, part of what drew you to this work was already having that kind of relationship at school and having a high respect. The other piece I would say, kind of, kind of like what Patrick said, that when you start from the outset, kind of acknowledging upfront that differential in power and that you don't want that to get in the way of just uh, doing what's right for your kid and for the teacher and for the other children in the school. So um, also being um, active and present in your child's school just as a regular volunteer was something I always found really helpful. I think that bought me more trust from um, uh, teachers especially because when they see you as visible and active, um, not just in your board member role, but just as a parent and community member, they, they notice that.
At this time, we're going to turn it over to see if the board has a question or two. If not, then we do have another question to ask as we move towards this 7:30 hour. And we might have one or two to ask, actually.
Dr. Morrison?
I really miss you guys. You know that. Um, uh, of course, with all the things that have happened in the last uh, two years, um, you might help the newer board members answer the question, how did you deal with those loud, that loud voice or, or voices um, who tried to influence you? Because it's really the loudest voices that you have to deal with. It's not so much the majority as, as, as Dr. Jordan said.
Yeah, so um, and, and Patrick and I during our time on the board certainly faced um, many times in which um, there was a controversial issue, whether it was a, a hiring or a firing, whether it was charter school applications, um, budget decisions for sure, all of these issues. Um, and I remember particularly as a brand new board member, um, I had only been on the board one year when Patrick came on. And um, he and I and other board members kind of relied on each other. We would call each other and, and talk through issues, not in any kind of strategy, strategizing, just in supporting each other, offering different viewpoints, um, kind of getting ideas about where to get input from other sources, which is always helpful. Um, but particularly in taking a deep breath and stepping back and trying to take a little perspective at being very aware of just what you said, Mike, that it's often a single loud voice or a handful or a group that maybe is not representative of the whole community. Um, and, and when that's the case, you may react in a different way than when you're hearing something consistently across multiple schools, multiple groups, right? Um, it just changes the kind of way you respond to that. Um, one thing for sure, taking your time, giving yourself time to gather the information you need and make a decision. Don't feel rushed into saying things right away if you're not certain. Just out, and I, I know what that feels like to be put on the spot in that way. It's okay to say, I need more information before I speak about that. And I promise you, I will get back to you, right?
I would agree with that 100% for sure. Reach out to your fellow board members. Um, Peg's being very kind right now to uh, when I came on the board, I don't know, I happened to be kind of a magnet for some of these um, controversy uh, seeking uh, members of the public at the time. Um, so we, we certainly did need to, you know, lean on each other. And really, you could just take stock of, you know, make sure other people are hearing what you're hearing. Uh, when you're being viciously attacked in the public, it's easy to become emotional and, and, you know, you kind of need to check your filter and make sure you heard uh, exactly what was, what was really happening in your engaging public sentiment. Um, definitely take your time. Um, that's probably the most important thing. And um, I would just add to that, go with your gut. You know, each and every single one of you uh sought this office, not because it paid money uh, and not because it's a vehicle to run for some other big office. In fact, you know, you get to make unpopular decisions on a bi-weekly basis is probably the opposite. But um, you know, you uh, you did this because you care and you want to make a difference. Uh, and you want to change the odds for kids. So go with your gut. You typically, you know, uh, you kind of know where things are going and you know usually in your gut what's right and what's not, especially once you've done your homework, if you don't rush it, so.
Thank you. I believe other board members that have a question?
Thank you for all of this wisdom. It's very useful. I'm taking notes. Okay, here's my biggie. Um, both of you talked about the importance of, which we all know, but it's, it's good to be reminded of knowing our student population and being in the schools and being visible. Okay, where I've struggled with this is not, not being scary, right? And to be seen as, as just a normal person who wants to be, who wants to know the school, who wants to know the staff, who wants to know the students, and not feel like I'm taking people's time. I, I think of schools I've been to where I know the principal is so busy, but yet, you know, he or she like feels like they're a tour guide, you know? And I don't, I don't know how to, what to do about that. Where I, I just wanna like, I don't know, put on a wig and be in disguise and, and like really authentically get to experience the school where I'm not feeling like I'm, I'm, somebody has to like show me around. So any uh, more wisdom you have to share on how we could, um, how I could do better with that? So, I'm listening.
All right. Um, so, so not to be pessimistic. It's a little impossible to, to um, to not had, just have some of that effect, like, like what Patrick talked about. Um, there are just, some people are always gonna be kind of scared by a board member in the building. Um, on the one hand, if you go for, um, I've, I've heard sometimes people say, well, that, I've never saw that board member in a building. Okay, so you get, get flack for that. On the other hand, when you do come, they're suspicious that maybe you're, you're trying to looking for problems or um, kind of um, have, you know, not so great motives. So, so that you can't control. The only thing you have control over is yourself, your own behavior, and kind of, of your manner and your openness in which you experience the school and the populations. So, so doing kind of a mix of, I know that for me, when I first came on the board, I made, made a point of visiting every single building at some point throughout the year. Um, and then also attending school events does allow you to be more anonymous, right? So that's something, um, it was a little more difficult for me because I had kids of my own that were busy and had activities, but something, if, if I had more time to have done, I might have done more of when I, I look back on that. Um, certainly um, reaching, reaching out to, to various school groups. Um, going to DCAC is, is a terrific way to, to also uh, learn more about schools. But um, it's just kind of a different, difficult role to be in, Melanie. And uh, over, over time, as they get to know you, you begin to develop more of a level of trust with people. But I, I would say just being open and um, genuine and curious and, and listening mostly, just mostly listening.
I'd agree with that, Melanie. I, I, you know, of course, I probably sounded pretty pessimistic. I was the downer that Peg uh worked not to be in my, my last comment. But it is true, you're always going to be in these folks' eyes a board member. Uh, and your presence is gonna put some people at a, you know, at a disease. So I think just um, knowing that and, and you get to exercise every single one of your leadership skills. You get to use your uh, your um, you know, your uh, your person ability to try to put people at ease and help them understand that if you are in the building, you know, you certainly don't want to take any of their time. You know how busy they are. Um, there are just a few very specific things that you want to see and you're not looking for problems, you just want to understand better. And you're really here to ask more questions and learn from them because they're the experts on the ground doing the work. Um, so that won't, still won't work with everybody, but uh, that's true. It's honest and genuine. And I think that's, you know, probably the best you can aim for.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Uh, I'm sorry.
Uh, just, just a, a comment from my experience, Melanie. Several teachers have asked me to come in and just sit in the classroom. And I've done that for, uh, an elementary teacher, watched her teach math and then things like that. And that was very helpful. And I think the teacher, I mean, I've gotten emails from her uh, many times. Uh, she, she trusted the process at, at that point. I had another thing that I, I did. I, I was like Peg. I went to every school right at first and, and then got led around like you did. And, and you know, that's not, that's not an obvious way to look at a, a school. But, um, oh, I went to a phys ed class and, um, and watched the phys ed teachers because they won an award and they, they just did a wonderful job. So, um, and, oh, Peg, I know volunteered, uh, when her kids were there. And I think that, uh, I, I was impressed with that too. I don't, I don't know if Patrick did or not, but, um, those are a, a couple of other things.
Thank you. There, there was a PTO meeting I attended where I felt like people then were looking at me like for a little too much. That made me uncomfortable. And it made me feel like I was representing the, the district and not just the school. So I stopped going to PTO meetings.
So, so one thing that could help with that, Melanie, is just upfront at the very beginning, when you're introduced, that you kind of explain what your purpose of being there is. And that kind of sets the expectation of, hey, I am just here to listen and to get to know you and your school community. Thank you for inviting me and I look forward to hearing what all of you have to say.
Okay, thank you. Really good advice, Dr. Morrison, McCarthy and Mr. Woods. Thank you.
With the final questions, uh, unless the board has a list of, uh, any other additional questions that Ms. Cope and I had, that is more of the practical level question in regards to, uh, you have one employee, the superintendent, uh, to evaluate. And that was touched on a little bit by our speakers. And, uh, if this retreat were a longer weekend retreat, I suspect they would have gotten into what does that look like hypothetically in various areas? Can, uh, either of you, and I certainly invite the board members who've been serving for some time as well to address this, but certainly either of you as the kind of final question, share, how do you, um, get things done when you have ideas? Who do you bring them to and how do you see traction? So let's say you want to see, I don't know, a new building, a new program, a survey. You want something done. Do you take it to the principal of its school level or to the director if it's a department or to the superintendent? So how do you get those things done? When you come on and you have some great ideas, what does that look like for you? Or do you bring it to the board? Dr. McCarthy, can you start with that and then Mr. Woods?
Yeah, and I think actually Patrick's going to be able to really give a terrific real life example and kind of explaining the process he went through with his ideas around the dual language magnet school. But, um, I, I could say that, um, things I learned along the way, um, I think there are a number of different ways in which that those ideas can begin to be explored. Um, certainly the individual meetings with the superintendent is, is a good place to sound things out. And often you will get guidance from them. So for example, when I first joined the board, I had some questions about the gifted program. And Tony Sawyer was the superintendent then, and he said, I think that would be terrific to explore that more. Let's put together a committee and you can be part of it. And he set up a process by which I could gain the knowledge I needed in order to be able to, to guide that. Um, so that, so that was one way. Um, another way for sure is, um, what they were talking about in trait three in the presentation that you watched. And this kind of speaks to what Lala brought up about how is it that we learn what we need to know? Um, and how do we find that balance between educating ourselves and using some board time for that, but not bogging it down so that we're there till midnight, which, which I have had happen, as Patrick has too. So, um, there certainly is a process in, um, that we used in the past where we would allow for longer presentations, particularly when there is something you're studying. So for us, part of that was that K through eight campus. When that idea came up, some of that information was being presented at a board meeting where in the discussion section, we might reserve a somewhat longer period, maybe no more than 30 minutes on a single topic. So, um, that, that, that would be another idea.
Thank you. Mr. Woods?
Yeah, I would, um, I, I think, uh, I think Peg's exactly right. The only thing really I would add to that, you know, besides, uh, making sure you have the right kind of fonts to find your, your information, uh, would be realize that you don't do anything as one single board member. Uh, nothing happens from the district's stand, but nothing will happen at all without four affirmative votes. And ideally, you know, you want seven affirmative votes and you want to make sure you've talked in, uh, with your superintendent, the administrator, who's going to have to carry out this plan and it doesn't take them by surprise. So, um, in, in my opinion, I guess two ways of doing this, you know, I came on the board and I had two, I had a whole lot of really great ideas, obviously. But two that come to mind, you know, I thought, number one, we needed to do more and invest more in terms of early childhood education in a district like ours where you are going to have some pretty significant, you know, uh, inequities in terms of opportunity, uh, for high quality early learning from one neighborhood to the next within our district. Uh, that what's going to help us alleviate that achievement gap, which only shows up in third grade tests. Uh, but really it's an opportunity gap that existed long before the students, you know, even got into our doors. Uh, you're going to need to invest upfront in early childhood education. Then on the other side, um, the other thing that I really wanted to do, I thought in a district like ours, we needed to have a good, solid two-way dual language education program, uh, where language equity would be the goal, uh, where we would have a significant, we've got a significant native Spanish speaking population. You can do this with any language, I thought, but ours, where we had a large native Spanish speaking population, that's what we had. Let's, uh, instead of trying to supplant those kids' native language and sending the implicit message that their native language and the culture that's inextricably linked to it is inferior, uh, trying to supplant it with English, let's, you know, actually build off that advantage and create an army for bilingual, biliterate, interculturally competent kids who can compete in this new international economy. That helped Topeka as a city become more vibrant, in, in my opinion. So, um, I took two separate approaches and, and Peg could probably, highlight the mistakes I made on each of these issues on early childhood. You know, I, I was definitely transparent about what I thought needed to happen, but it was so much my thing initially, um, viewed as my thing by not just the administrators and by, you know, people in the public, but by my colleagues even on the board. That, you know, it, it loses a little bit of its luster and, you know, even though we are all focused on what's best for kids, you can kind of obscure the message a little bit if, if you're all over it and it's too much of your thing. And you haven't given your, uh, fellow board members the opportunity to do some of that learning with you. Uh, and by way, put their DNA, you know, their own fingerprints on, on that issue too. Now, so, so we moved on early childhood. We ended up moving a lot slower. Uh, and we only moved once every other board member uh, was convinced that it's the right thing and they had the opportunity to come to that conclusion themselves without me trying to jam it down their, their throats. On dual language, uh, that was one of those where we knew we needed to sell that, to the community and it couldn't just be seen as one board member's thing. So, um, in early engagement with all of the board members and with the administration and with the superintendent, uh, we were able to do all of our, our learning together. Uh, instead of trying to corner all the knowledge like I did on the other issue, um, we did all of our learning together and the board actually came to all of its conclusions together. You just have to be able to trust that all of these people who are smarter than me, I know that, um, you know, are going to come to good conclusions when they look at the same information I do. And, and at that point it ends up, you know, we, we did that a lot quicker and we did it usually with all seven O votes. And, and there wasn't the same controversy, uh, that we had around early childhood back in, you know, the 2008, 2009 years.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Uh, with that being the final question on both Ms. Cope's and my end and the board having asked several questions, honestly, if this went on, you probably could continue this for another hour or two, just with the level and, uh, things that we could cover. But, you know, when you look at our documents, all of our documents, about five or six years ago, I start, I put students first on everything, students first, because it, it takes you back to why everybody's here, which is what the board has said. And, and both the national speakers have said and the local speaker as well. This board that just left the board, I have never felt, uh, well, the last board that I had in St. Louis as well was, uh, so incredibly supportive in that, um, there was a level of knowledge and relationship, uh, very quickly about, I have an idea, you know, you know, there are no, almost a no surprise feel, uh, both with the current board that's preparing to leave, the board that did leave. And, and just knowing that navigation so that I can be the best superintendent for any board that I'm working for that I can possibly be. And to do that, uh, keeping in mind that you're always a board member. So when, um, ideas, uh, surface that is your thing, as Mr. Woods, I didn't know early childhood was your thing. If it's your thing, that piece of thinking about the conversation that we have that we talk about, what are some shared opportunities to build the conversation with a broader group or a broader board? Secondarily, uh, if there are ideas or projects or programs, um, that while ideas and maybe discuss with other people around the superintendent, that superintendent is at the core to know what those are and to be part of that conversation. We can hear one of our students in the background, probably in the woods.
Yeah, you do. I'll mute that. Sorry.
I know. That's okay. She came and waved and we love it. Students first. And so, as we bring this piece to a close, I just want to thank our panel. But to use this as yet a springboard to understand the context by which some of the things that we do, but to also help gear kind of how we might continue to build onto the foundation that's already there in ways that, um, allow us to be partners together in this work. With that, again, I want to thank our panelists. And I delivered a gift on Dr. McCarthy's step, but she came straight from work, so she does not know that. And Mr. Woods has a wife in the district, so I was able to get him his gift through his wife, which is the framed photo that, uh, some of the other board members have, um, from the second gentleman and the U.S. Department of, uh, the Secretary of Education. So you have that sitting on your step. When you see that little white bag, don't be too suspicious. It came from Topeka Public Schools. Uh, but that's just a token to say thank you for your time and for investing it today. I'm going to turn it over to our board president if there are any closing comments at the end of this uh, panel and, uh, retreat that you'd like to make, sir.
Well, I would like to echo Dr. Morrison's comments. You're missed. And, uh, thank you for taking your time to come to share with us your experiences. Ms. Moley?
Um, when I came on the board, um, Ms. McCarthy was very kind to meet with me to just help me get a feel about what I'd just gotten myself into. And, you know, explaining some of the background and gave me some, uh, materials that she had gone through that thought might be helpful for me. And they really were, just the time I got to spend with her. And so I'm hoping and maybe challenging, uh, some of our members who are leaving the board, if you would do the same thing with the people who are elected, it really helped me a lot to understand the position I was sitting in. So I'm hoping I can challenge you to maybe meet with your new people to encourage them in the job that they're about to do. So I personally thank you for helping me get off on the right foot.
You're most welcome. And, and I did the same thing. I continued to call on old board members, like for example, Doug Glenn was somebody who's kind of a mentor to me. And you know how much all of us love this district and want to continue to be of help to you. So please never hesitate to, to call with questions or, or if you just need some support, we most definitely know how that feels. So that's an open invitation.
Anyone else? Have any?
So Reverend Williams, thank you so much for allowing us to have the retreat during this space, uh, as our superintendent's report. Uh, and if there are no other questions regarding, uh, that space, that really concludes the report for this evening. Uh, we do want to share that, um, our, um, as we have taken the strategic plan off, uh, for the next meeting, we do want to give that a slight update. Remember the full update for enrollment is at the end of this month, uh, at the end of September, my apologies. Uh, but the enrollment projection was 12,972. Right at this point, we are at 13,115 students. We normally don't exceed the projection, uh, much less to that magnitude. Uh, and it's still August, so we, uh, certainly, uh, are above projection and will likely be, uh, farther than 13,115, which is where we are to date. Uh, and we'll again give a final update the end of September. Those are, uh, the items that we have and I turn it back over to you if there are questions for administration.
Yes. Thank you. Any questions? Dr. Bonebrake?
We were expecting 200 fewer students for this upcoming academic year. How do you explain this increase? It's helpful for the budget.
It is, and there are, and, uh, Dr. Kip is on with us in the interest of time. Uh, and Dr. Kip certainly can chime in if I misstate something or miss something. Uh, some people have transferred in from other areas, other states, because they perhaps don't like the protocols that are being used during a pandemic. We also know that there are some people that are just moving into Topeka this particular year, which we're excited about. There are some people that, uh, chose to keep their children at home for homeschooling and have chosen to, uh, adjust and bring them to school and or put them on virtually. We have approximately 70 students that are virtual, which is less than 0.5% elementary students that are virtual. But offering that platform, especially if you were homeschooling, offers a platform with certified teachers and a curriculum. Those are all, um, uh, areas that have led to that. We are encouraging people enrolling in their school closest to their home where possible. So there are some schools that are much, uh, under, much under enrolled, but majority of them are at capacity or beyond. We've been hiring teachers and we've successfully done that. All classrooms are covered. And we're just opening up classrooms and, and continuing to add to the budget, uh, and to the enrollment. Dr. Kip, do you want to add to that, that I missed an area, sir, or misstate anything?
Uh, just a point of clarification that, you know, last year we were at 13,183. Now, I did project a pretty significant drop, you know, about 200. Uh, we have not dropped as much as I anticipated. So that increase that Dr. Anderson just described, uh, rather than it being a 200 student drop, as of today, it's only about a 68 to 70 student drop.
You have to love our data dude. He has a way of making the positive sound not so positive. However, given again, it's still August, uh, then, uh, do know that between now and the end of September, normally we would not be, um, above the projection at this time. Would that be fair to say, uh, Dr. Kip?
Yes, that would be fair to say, and I just want to manage the expectations here. But, uh, yeah, I just think it's important to clear that up. And, and yeah, we do have another month before the, the official count date. And this is an inordinately high number at this point in the year. So I'm pretty optimistic about in the next 30 days that that number will continue to grow.
Now, we will say this, some of the schools, uh, such as, uh, schools where new principals are and people that have been current principals for Now, we will say this, some of the schools, such as schools where new principals are and people that have been current principals for some time, such as Robinson Middle School, they are 108% enrolled. Highland Park is over 100% enrolled, so more students than what would have been projected. We have schools like Meadows that, that we projected perhaps a drop. But by allowing the students that would have been transported by bus to other schools to go to their homeschool and just adding a teacher. Meadows is actually able to maintain more kindergartners than projected. And then, of course, the virtual is completely new in that regard. Remember, we piloted it with 15 students. Grew it small and now 75 students being enrolled in virtual, which is open to anyone in the state, is also an opportunity. All K-12 is open to anyone in the state and that virtual continues to climb. Any other questions for us? Because that does conclude our reports.
Dr. Mickelson?
Just quickly a COVID update.
Absolutely. And as Ms. Vodder comes online and Dr. Gray will ask her to join online if there are any specific questions. Overall, we are excited that we started the year with eight vaccination clinics. And the majority of our staff in February were vaccinated, so we know that the majority are still vaccinated. And it could have only grown higher between February and today. As a result of that, we do not have reports directly from the Health Department, just due to HIPAA on who is in quarantine or who's positive. We do not get those reports, nor do they have the liaison that they had last year that gave that kind of update in that regard. However, what we do know from self-reporting, we have approximately, if we looked at who self-reported as teachers as being positive. We have approximately 11 teachers in the entire district, not just teachers, 11 people, which would be out of 2,500 staff members. At most 11. We do know that students overall across the schools, if you look at each individual school. There's been very little impact to the schools and at most quarantining because of close contacts in the community. Are more of what we're seeing as, when people self-report that. But our students have been arriving with the majority of our students in class, wearing masks and indoors. And glad to be in school. That's our general update in that regard, unless there are other questions.
No, thank you for that update. Sounds positive so far. Hope it continues.
It's been a wonderful start.
Thank you. I do have a question. What, could, could you go over like what are, what the expectation is if the student had a like a close contact? So they get, the parent gets the call, all right, your child was, was a close contact. What, what is the quarantining policy? Just kind of talk us through this.
Absolutely. We'll mention two things. Dr. Gray's going to email unless it's already on the website. The form that we actually use that says, if this happens, here's what happens if this happens. It was in the C News for those that are listening, if they want to go back and look at that form. But first I'll see if Ms. Vodder is on to just verbalize it. And then for those that like the visual, we'll bring that visual up and remind people it's on the C News and on our main website. Ms. Vodder, are you on with us at this time? So since he doesn't see Ms. Vodder at this time, we will go to that document and that form. Dr. Gray, can you navigate us to the document that I just referenced that you and Ms. Vodder created? That gives specifics about quarantine and close contact.
Yes, Dr. Anderson, give me one second here to get it up.
And is it on the main website? So we can go to the main webpage?
No, ma'am, it's on the C News. It's with the C News.
So if we can go to the C News, Mr. Gallin. And as you go to the C News, I can see Ms. Vodder is logging on as well. Ms. Vodder, as we bring up this document, can you share a little bit about if there's a quarantine or a close contact? What happens if it's a close contact? That, I believe that was the question. Am I correct, Ms. Stuart Campbell, in a general sense?
If, if a parent gets a call, not from the school, but like some, somebody else, a neighbor saying, oh no, just found out mom has COVID and that child was in their house.
Then what happens?
What should we do? Yes.
And what should a parent do, Mrs. Vodder?
Okay, sure, of course. So the Shawnee County Health Department has given us guidance on what we are to do in that situation. And so their guidance says that, beginning with the date of last contact. There is a 10-day home quarantine period that would be required of that individual. And so if I'm exposed today, then tomorrow would be day one of my 10-day quarantine period. And I would be required to stay home for that length of time. I can also test on day six with a PCR test. And if that PCR test is negative, I can be released from my home quarantine on day eight to return to my normal activities.
Are the, the reactions different if the individual is vaccinated? Is that correct?
If an individual is vaccinated?
If the individual is fully vaccinated, their quarantine time is non-existent? Or is there still quarantine?
There would not be quarantine unless that person is symptomatic. At which time, if they've been exposed, fully vaccinated and symptomatic, then the Health Department would request them to be tested with a PCR test. And depending on the results of that, then would determine quarantine or not.
That answer your question, Ms. Stuart Campbell? So as more people are vaccinated, students above 12. That the quarantine may not be a significant issue, but for those others, it is. We're seeing very limited impact at all at elementary, actually. So again, as we start the year, we will continue to monitor through that. The form, they just took it off, but for those that are watching, that form tomorrow will be on the main webpage. Right now, we have the Shawnee County Guidelines on the main webpage. It came out Thursday. I'm sorry, it came out Wednesday in the C News and it's the response plan for staff, students and volunteers. I'm sorry, and visitors. And so you can see if there's a confirmed case, you see each section. If there's an emergency COVID-19 symptoms, if you have an indoor contact, if you have a household contact, if you have travel-related quarantine. I don't think there is anything a person can ask that a person would not be able to answer from this form. And so we just thank both Dr. Gray and Ms. Vodder for putting such an easy form to follow together. With all those questions, it's really an easy graphic. So if anyone that's listening looks on our webpage, if they didn't get the C News, then it'll be there as well for you to reference. Other questions for us? We do have some fantastic news. Both Ms. Wallace and, and myself and team heard from KDHE that there was a grant about, was it a week ago? It's about a week ago. And we sat with Mr. Robbins and we thought we could write this grant. And when they shared the grant could include adding nurses, adding a mobile vehicle for vaccinations and testing and many other things it could include. And Ms. Wallace will touch on a few of those things. We thought we would write the grant for everything it could include. And by golly, we found out today about two hours ago that we received that grant. It is quite substantial. And so I'm going to ask Mrs. Wallace to share exactly how much over the three years. And just to give some examples of some of the things it will provide.
Good evening. So the KDHE grant is going to fund 30 nurses or LPNs. So we have a nurse in each building to handle testing, an interpreter. A 10-passenger van for mobile testing along with fuel, testing supplies, PPE. And our strategies that we submitted were, they call them test or stay to know, stay to learn and stay to play. So information, academics and athletics and other activities would all be covered.
So about 3.2 million for three years consecutively is what it would provide. And now we, for the public to know, we do have nurses in every school. This will be an extra nurse. So the nurse in the school could just be the nurse for the school. This nurse could be the COVID nurse as one example. It also provided, we also added in, they would buy computers. So we added in computers for every nurse, new computers. It also provides that. Those are just some of the things with this 3.2 million every year for three years. For really just focused on this COVID pandemic response. So we just thank all members, Mr. Robbins, Ms. Wallace, Ms. Kramer, who writes many of our grants and just the entire team to, that came together with me so quickly to get all of these pieces in place. And most importantly, we thank KDHE and our funders of this grant. We also put in the grant to partner with University of Kansas Clinic at Topeka High as a partner group. So we may well be partnering in some creative ways with the clinic to further expand their opportunities over these next three years. That does conclude the items that we would like to share, sir.
That brings us to board comments. But before we go into board comments. The Topeka Public Schools family lost tragically one of our young employees that was 19-years-old, Victoria. Soto Lamas, she had just had a baby four months ago, little boy. They're having her celebration of life service tomorrow, so I would like us to observe a moment of silence for her. Her son and her family and the Topeka Public Schools family. Thank you. And that service, for anybody's interests, is Lady of Guadalupe at 11 o'clock. The visitation, I believe, is set nine, nine to 10, with the rosary service from 10 to 11. Okay, that brings us to board comments. F, right, right, left, what you, Dr. Bonebrake.
Okay, with all the controversy regarding masks, I was wondering if we could convince the anti-maxers that maybe they would be more compliant, wearing masks. If we could convince them that they would lose their fear of critical race theory. And maybe be immunized. I meant that to be funny, guys. Masks prevent fear of critical race theory. If we could convince them of that, maybe they'd be more convinced to wear masks in school. Never mind. I just work here.
Just two things. One, you noticed I wasn't here last time. There is other viruses out there besides COVID. And I got one and it was nasty. I'm just now recovered, two weeks, negative COVID multiple times. So just to let you know that there are other viruses. And two, the District Health Council had a meeting this week. And Family Fun and Fitness Night is September 15th at 5:30. And so commonly, if you're able to go and walk around the track. I made a suggestion of doing a vaccine clinic and they're looking into doing that. And Ms. Wallace is instigating that. So just be aware of that. Thank you, guys.
Just want to quickly acknowledge the words of wisdom that Mr. Woods and Dr. McCarthy offered tonight. You can see how those of us who served with them hold them in such high regard and their leadership on, in Topeka Public Schools. And also Ms. Kirk, who is a dogged advocate for students first, and Ms. Johnson, who, who similarly was a strong leader. So just thank you for your word of wisdom and appreciate you imparting those with us tonight. That's all I have.
I have a little bit of the list. I apologize. I'll go fast. So I got a chance to visit our service center about a week ago, right before school started. I know how busy they are and I wanted to go by and thank them for all the work they're putting in. Our, our drivers who deliver the new books, all of the curriculum that, all the curriculum that we had bought, it was all delivered. A lot of people needed desks. They were just working in some of the hottest temperatures and they were just so appreciative to have somebody come by and thank them and, and representing the board. Speaking of that also, the last meeting, we got this school infrastructure issue. That talks about the concerns in our nation about infrastructure. And it made me, as I was looking through it and reading it, realizing what a stellar job our service center does. And Mr. Robbins and the, how he handles our budget, our buildings are beautiful. Our district is stellar. And we are up to date and wired and everything. And so we are very fortunate, evidently better than many in our nation. So thank you for that. I was at Meadows when they received their new teacher. I was volunteering over there with a group of retired teachers. We volunteer there. And this new teacher came in and the love that Meadows put around her as she set up her desk and classroom the day before school started, it was amazing. The teachers all came together, set up her room before she ever came there. They already had the, the number of students she was going to have and who she was going to have. And it was such a shock for her, but there was so much love there. It was just fantastic. And I was, I felt very privileged to be a part of that. And I thank Meadows for letting me do that. Thank you to our leadership team for the national recognition that we had. I know behind the scenes, secretive, being very secretive, do you make sure that security was tight? You all pulled off a remarkable event. And one of the things that I took from it was that the second gentleman, Mr. Imhoff, said, we are an exemplary district. And that's why we are here. And so thank you to Dr. Anderson for bringing us that recognition and that they understand what we're doing here in Topeka, Kansas. That was really remarkable. How about this little Miss Adeline Meyer from Jardine? Who is changing the world. She decided that palm oil, after she researched it, was very dangerous for us. And she is working to make sure that palm oil is taken out of products. That's the type of stu-, and I think she's a third grader this year. She did this as a second grader. That's the kind of students that we are producing in Topeka Public Schools. She wrote a cookie company, her favorite cookies, and they have taken palm oil out of their ingredients. And that is pretty remarkable. Congratulations to her and, and all the staff at Jardine. We are going to have a Kansas Can Tour and we're hosting it here in our district at Bishop Education Center. I can't remember the date, but I encourage each and every one of us to attend. It's a tour with our community business members, parents. Educational leaders to come together and give your thoughts around what is happening in education. And I think it'll be a really educational piece for us to, to attend. And I encourage you to, I'm sure we can get the date from our district exactly when they're here. Where we will be hosting them.
September 9.
September 9.
I'm sorry, September 8.
Like, oh, 8, September 8, about 1 o'clock, if I remember right. It should be very interesting. And thank you to Advisor to Excel. And thank you to Advisor Excel. As I look at this district website, they're like little gremlins. They were everywhere. They came out and brought supplies and surprises to all, so many of our buildings. And so thank you to them. And I want to do a teacher thank you. I hope that you can see, we had such a wonderful beginning of the school year. I saw so many educators out there greeting students, making them feel comfortable, parents in the school buildings, and partnering with their teachers and administrators that were making it all happen. So thank you. I had, I had magic marker on my fingers for about half the day. So it shows you how long I've been a teacher. But thank you all. Thank you.
This is Melanie Stuart Campbell.
All right. So yeah, last week, both my kids started school. My son at Topeka High and I got a text about 15 minutes ago from Topeka High, from Topeka High PTO, who's listening, who, who told me to come. I will be treated just as a parent and not a school board member. And I am so appreciative of that. So I will be, I'm back, I'm back, I'm back in the PTO. So I thought that was pretty cool. And my daughter's at Landon. And so far, so good. The children are happy. And I continue to be very impressed with the professionalism and the quality of our staff. I went to back to school nights. I was at State Street and Topeka West, a school board member, not as parent. And that was, those were, it was a great experience. Both of those schools were, it was a calm, orderly, nice beginning of the school year. So. I want to specifically say about, so being at Topeka High and meeting all the teachers. So meeting the, the two dual language teachers, and man, are we lucky. So these two individuals are very experienced, charming, charming teachers. And they're both from Spain. So I was happy to meet them. And I already know the four dual language teachers who, that we have at Landon. And three out of those four are local hires. One of the fours is from Spain. And I know all of them and they're all really wonderful. But I want to make the point, I would like for TPS to be, for us to be more strategic in local hires. We love our teachers from Spain, but they have visa restrictions. They, they gotta go back. We can't, we can't keep them. So for our dual language program, which we, I know we all agree how important it is, but for it to really be sustainable, long-term sustainable, we, we really need to invest more in local hires. And so that's something I, I challenge us to do. Some ideas are tuition assistance for our classified staff, our bilingual parents who want to be teachers, or our students, our students, our graduates. And I know, Dr. Anderson, you will go to students who graduated and, and give them like, I don't know what you call it, but like, like, like a letter of intent kind of thing to encourage them to come back and teach in Topeka Public Schools. So I would, I would love to see that as well. If we can also target more of our bilingual graduates and offer some tuition assistance or something. So that's a challenge I, I give to our district. And I know we're up for it because we do great things in TPS. Okay, last COVID, can't, can't not talk about this. So here we are in this Delta surge, as it's being called. And I looked today, and I think we all know that Shawnee County is in the red. And as of today, I looked at the scorecard, there are 69 people hospitalized in Shawnee County. And only 54.7% of Shawnee County residents who are eligible for the vaccine are fully vaccinated. And that number is too low. And I know TPS is doing so much with the vaccination clinics. I know, I don't really know what more we can do besides this one idea. But for the community at large, I, I know we're doing everything we can. So I read that last week, that 240 kids a day, like kids, were being hospitalized with COVID nationwide, not Shawnee County, nationwide. That's a lot. And that was pretty scary. So back to vaccinations, this is controversial. I'm sure I'm going to anger some people, but here it goes. I strongly support requiring that all TPS staff get vaccinated. Or if they, and I understand that there's going to be exceptions, like because of a health condition or religious exemption. So, but for a TPS staff who, who aren't getting vaccinated to submit to a weekly COVID negative test. And I learned that, okay, well, when I was a teacher in TPS, I had to do the TB test. And so I did a little digging today to find out like what state requirements are. And state law requires all employees of the school district who come in regular contact with students to submit a certification of health that there is no evidence of a physical condition that would conflict with the health, safety or welfare of the students. Okay, so that to me means our staff who are not vaccinated, who don't have, I, I really think they need to submit a negative COVID test. That is a responsible thing for us to do as a school district, for our community, and to keep our kids as COVID-free as possible. So I will look forward to some follow-up on what we can do about that and logistically how that will look. Thank you.
My kids are, you know, back in school, three kids. And they're, they're excited. One of them is signing up for trumpet. And so that'll be interesting in the household to have a regular trumpet practice, practicing. But other than that, they have nothing but good things to say about where they're at. I'm happy for them. I think it was a week ago, I visited Highland Park Central Elementary. I hadn't been there and I was really excited to be there for a lot of different reasons. But I met Dr. Hughes there and, and it was wonderful. She was, she was awesome and showed off the school. I ran into a couple of individuals in particular I was excited to see. One was my college roommate, KU, who is a teacher there in the ELL programs, Mr. G, as, as they call him there. And then also a number of other teachers, one in particular mentioned that she went to school there and she teaches there. And I, I don't know what it is, but to me, but there's this newer generation who we're, are coming back to Topeka and coming to our schools, alumni, which I, I love to hear that today. Mrs. Zimmerman there, who actually is teaching in the same room where she went to school there. And in fact, she showed the students, she showed me her exact seat where she used to sit in that classroom. I thought that was awesome. And I know her parents and they, they are amazing individuals. So we're, we're lucky to have a lot of individuals like Mr. G and Mrs. Zimmerman and all the other teachers there, as well as Dr. Hughes there. So I enjoyed my, my visit there. And I do look forward to visiting as many schools as possible, understanding that we got to do this as safely as possible. So I may not be able to physically meet, go anywhere until things get better. But once things are, are better in terms of transmission, I want to get out to the schools. In the meantime though, I'm going to try and zoom in with a couple of other school officials and just meet and get to see how things are going. Speaking of the school, I, I'm really proud of 501. I think when you look at what's going on across our, our city, states and, and the country, I'm really proud of how we handled a very difficult situation. And I couldn't be more proud of, of where we are right now, the execution among administration, our teachers, our staff, parents, custodians, everyone who's involved with making this a reality and, and putting our kids first. I think that's, I couldn't be more proud of, of how we transitioned this, this difficult time. But I, I think if you ask the kids, did they, you know, they think everything seemed, at least I hope, it feels as normal as possible during incredibly difficult times. And so I'm very proud of our district. And I think my sense is that lots of other individuals are paying attention and are noticing what we're doing, how we're conducting business. And, and it's, it's getting, gaining, it's obviously gaining attention at the federal, at the national level, but also I think locally among our community. So I couldn't be more, more happy about that. And you know, we, we were going to vote and we didn't on the strategic plan. I'm going to take a deep dive. I had a number of questions. Our discussion today about, about our board and about getting us sort of focused on what we want to do is really sort of energized me to sort of jump into the strategic plan. I encourage my colleagues to jump into that and for us to have a really good discussion about the strategic plan. Does it, does it meet what we want, where we want our district to be in, in the five years that it's planned out? And what else are we missing? What haven't we thought of? So I'm excited to come back in a couple of weeks and, and have that discussion. Just as, as others have, as this have described, is, is the function of why we're here and what makes a great board. So other than that, yeah, I think that's all.
Well, thank you. Like everyone else, I'm proud to be part of Topeka Public Schools, especially last week when, whenever that was, Second Gentleman and the U.S. Secretary of Education, okay? I'm not a native Topeka, but I was Topeka that day. Few years ago, I attended a workshop called Seven Traits of an Effective Father that dramatically changed my life. And tonight, I get a handout entitled Eight Characteristics of Effective School Boards that will dramatically change how I function as a school board member. Anybody that knows me, I'd rather be effective than be good. And so it's time well spent. Hope that everyone remembers to say safe and healthy. Mr. COVID does not want to go away. And for some reason, he's, you know, that fly on a Saturday morning that did you keep trying to shoot away? Well, I keep trying to shoot Mr. COVID away from my family, but he keeps stalking me. So stay safe and healthy. Is there anything else that needs to come before our board this evening? If not, we stand adjourned.